All right, don't forget the audio. Okay, so things up on the screen. Good enough. All right. Now that we have the technology straightened out, we'll get the show going. Uh, welcome everybody. First thing on the uh agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll call this being the order. We'll do that. Then we got the pledge of allegiance and roll calling.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Ebert, here. Trustee Frank, here. President Murphy. President Protem Abeglin.
Here.
Trustee Doorward.
Here.
Trustee Bart's, here. Trustee Miley.
Present.
All right, we have a forum. Next, we have uh public comments. Uh, please limit any comments to five minutes and there for anything that is not on the agenda. If any of our guests would like to step up to the mic, now is the time. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next is consent agenda. We have approved minutes of the January ninth twenty twenty five village board meeting and the approved the general fund water. And sewer invoices, no additional, no additional bills.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh consent agenda as stated.
I'll second.
Get a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Passed. All right, presentations uh unaudited twenty twenty four end of year financials by administrator Jenkins. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So before you and in your packet was just a one page unaudited overview that we can uh refer to. Um, our new treasurer treasurer Hudson and I went through a lot of our uh fund balances at individual accounts. Made sure that things were tied up in the right locations and if they weren't, we made sure we did a bunch of transfers and journal entries to the right positions. So we have a pretty good handle and a pretty good feeling that this is um fairly accurate, but again, I should caution that everything that I tell you is unaudited. And may get corrected or fixed when our auditors come this spring. Um, so the way to look at this is we're gonna start with the general fund. You have our individual categories. The total is how much was actually taken in either as revenue or expenses. And then the budget is how much we planned. And then on the right side, you kind of you see a plus or minus. So I'll just go to high level through some observations here. Um, so the first one, you might notice that we are above in tax collections. This it does normally happen. Normally, this is the amount of taxes we're gonna collect and then we collect the that amount. If you remember with the guide O'Neal tax bill, we had omitted taxes. That were from the previous year that had to get allotted to each of the jurisdictions. This extra thirty eight thousand six oh one, that is our apportionment that would have been collected anyway, and thus hits the general fund. Um, further on down, you see minor increases and decreases for the individual line items, but overall, we ended up the general fund with an extra forty two forty three thousand than we had planned on. On the expense side, uh you see uh in general government, we had increase in insurance costs that in this year's budget, we now split amongst the funds. On public safety, we had less wages for uh police. Thank you, Marshall Lee. And uh less cost with our hydrant rentals that we do. That's based off of the water usage itself. On the public works category, you see an increase of expenses. Those guys did a lot more work on on streets as we know. And again, you'll notice the insurance that's now split up amongst the funds. Uh, park maintenance, we knew towards the end of the year that we were gonna have some funds to play with, and so we had allocated a few more dollars towards parks. You see that recognized there. Um, and then finally, you see uh a little bit less money getting spent in development and uh less transfers out that we had to do than we planned on. So overall, we spent about six thousand dollars more in expenses than we planned, but again, if you take the forty two of revenue minus the six thousand of expenses, we still end in net positive in our general fund. So for those keeping track on our fund balance, if this was the audited results. That would mean that we have about thirty eight thousand getting added to our general fund fund balance, which again, each year, we want to see at least something getting added to that number so that our auditors are happy. Um, so the second half of this page are just our other funds. So high level, uh we have our CIP fund. When we borrowed dollars, we planned on netting X amount of income, but remember, we didn't have to uh borrow as much because of the premiums that we got. So that resulted in slightly less dollars in our CIP revenues. On the debt service, you have the uh same kind of thing. We collected all of that debt service revenues. Doesn't mean we're we need to spend it all this year. It just wouldn't we receive the debt, it hit that hit the debt fund. On the fire fund, you see that we had to transfer a little bit more money in order to make the fire fund balance. That's that thirteen thousand of income that they received. On the TID, we have uh again, an increase of tax limit and investment revenue. So this is actually a pretty cool thing. That the increase of four hundred and twenty five thousand in income is purely from additional tax revenues. And the investments are our investments sitting in LGIP earning interest. So we didn't plan on getting this extra income. That's just income that the fund has now to again, to continue to make it balance. On the uh water fund, uh we again, we see the rental income allocated properly. I don't want to bore you guys, but it used to be that all of our rental income was sitting in the general fund, when it was really meant for the water fund. This now recognizes that. And then just minor increases or decreases for the lab and sewer funds. So then on the expense side, the only thing really of note is again, within the TID fund itself. We planned on spending uh three point eight million for the entire project and build out of the TID. We only spent two point six. One of those reasons is because the bids that we got were lower than we had planned, which is great. And two, some of that work, as you guys know, got moved into the twenty twenty five budget. That's to finish the paving that we're gonna be doing this year. Um, other than that, the uh water fund, we had less capital expenses than planned. Uh, that uh just resulted in overall savings for that fund. And then the same thing for the uh sewer fund, we had less wage costs um when that was held within that fund. So overall, when you look at all of the other funds outside of the general fund, we had a net positive of six seventy three. And then a less expenses of one point four million dollars. But again, I'll remind you, it's mainly because we took in a bunch of money this year that's planned for multiple years. It's not just because we're all of a sudden flush with cash. So. That's just a very high level summary where we're at. We're we're happy that nothing is is too scary. Where our general fund is positive, which is where we want it to be. And I think this sets us up well for success as we meet with our auditors this spring, and they can bring the true results to you guys then in summer. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, report on the operations of village by well village president. I did speak with him earlier this week. There's nothing that he wanted me to specifically cover, so we'll go back to you.
Oh, boy. Didn't you hear me talk enough? Um, all right, uh just covering over the last couple of months. Uh, we obviously are staying in touch with uh guy in O'Neal as much as we can. Um, we're hopeful that they have a buyer. The the rumor is that they might. Um, so we will again, we'll update you guys when we know something more solid. Um, if you guys remember, we sent out a RFP in December for uh a mixed use development of some kind. Um, that resulted in us chatting with a company called Workhorse Land Development, not to get confused with Workhorse, which is also our bookkeeping software. Um, but they are uh made out based out of the Hudson area of Wisconsin. They specialize in mixed use developments within TIDS. So we had a preliminary call with them a couple of weeks ago to review just different sites in the village. Um, and then they came in for a face to face meeting recently again, to look at the map and just gauge where our priorities were. Um, so they have some due diligence to do on their end to see kind of what scope a project that they want to do, if they're willing to do it. Um, they're gonna make some calls with with families like the ones that own the Noins property and some of the other vacant vacant lands in the village. And then if they are interested, obviously, they'll put together some sort of proposal that will continue to dig into a little bit deeper. So. Nothing concrete, but I'm just like, you know, that's going on, and that'll be exciting if that turns into anything. Um, we are continuing to be knee deep in tax collections. You'll see here in December, we collected forty three percent of our tax collections. Like continues to grow um throughout the month that ends January thirty first, as everybody knows. Um, we did all of our transfers for contingency dollars into LGIP. So again, that is in our budget. When we say that we're gonna save for rainy day in each of our funds, we do that right away in January, throw those dollars into LGIP, let it collect interest. And that way, we're better prepared for if and when we need to tap into those dollars. So that has happened already. On the uh public safety and infrastructure stuff, I won't steal these guys' thunder, but uh the well to upgrades continue ATV UTV signage is up. I know I know that some of you are very excited about that. Um, so I'm glad that we're able to get those up. And then we have our uh RFP going out for for uh Wenzel paving. So you guys will see that come to you in uh February's meetings as well. Uh, we worked on the uh parks and open space survey that we talked about the last meeting. Uh, that is now finalized and it'll be live uh starting this weekend. Go out to the our via our newsletter mailers that we're doing. And really, we just hope to get as much feedback as possible. The more that we can hear from our residents on what they want in our park system, then the more useful the tool this is gonna be be for us. That'll be followed up with uh community engagement session um in person, and then of course, review with our parks and rec committee as we continue on. And then uh finally, we uh did a wonderful tree lighting here last December. It feels like forever ago, but wasn't too long ago that we held here at at uh village hall with awesome kids from NOSD. We're planning uh awesome events with our Tuesday tunes lineup and fun before the fourth. Um, so just really exciting stuff that are happening here in the village of Fredonia. I will leave it at that. We've talked enough. Thank you.
I'm gonna pause. Can I pause just for a second? We have a couple of people waiting in the lobby. Natalie, can you hit the accept all button on there? All right, looks like they're in. Good. All right, go ahead, trustee Bart's.
Uh, I would like to give an a big thank you to our DPW staff. I we've got a couple of you guys here. Um, thank you for all the help that you guys did for the holiday tree lighting. I know it was a lot of work with the. Artificial trees this year and putting them together and assembling them and trying to keep them up great. Uh, so just wanted to give you guys a big thank you for all your help with all of that. It was really, really appreciated.
Awesome.
Good question for Chris.
Yeah.
How how confident are you that uh there's gonna be a buyer for Guy O'Neal?
Um, I guess I am not confident one way or another. I just heard the same rumors that maybe other people have. Um, my latest conversation with Kathy Schilling, who's the economic development director in Ozaki County, had heard through her sources that there was a buyer. Um, and we've received a a couple. Uh, what's the word? Legal documents through through us of like an asset merger kind of like. Predictment is probably happening because they wanted to know assets if if the if they if the villages owed any dollars and things like that. So it sounds like somebody is doing their due diligence to decide if they're gonna buy the company or not. So from what we've seen, there's hints there that somebody is trying to buy the company. Uh, but we know very little. We've we've done outreach to guy in O'Neal and they're keeping their mouth shut, so. Uh, we're hopeful.
Very hopeful. All right. Next, we have the village marshal. There's a report in your packet, but if there's anything else you'd like to add.
Thank you. Uh, just a few things. First off, I'd like to um just go along with what trustee Bart said is as I drive around the village, I heard a lot of complaints. About how that park down there looked this holiday season. Not just people in Fredonia, but from outside. So uh they uh they really went over well this year. Uh, my reports include some stuff um this month, uh kind of including stuff going forward. Uh, this is largely due to the fact that I can't do my annual report on twenty twenty four until I get some additional information back from Ben Marine. And that probably isn't gonna happen until sometime later this month, early February. So I did include a few things going over uh going forward. First thing is equipment issues. Um, our radar units are getting old. Uh, they go back a long time now and they're starting nickel and diamonds. They're not out of service yet. But I'm kind of planning for that. So um uh through a contact that uh our newest marshal has, Tom. Um, I've I've gotten arrangements to get a uh new radar unit at kind of discount. Uh, it's gonna save us several hundred dollars. Uh, but it's a uh it's what's called a double model, but the salesman just would take the conventions and show this is how it works. It's never been used. It's never been beat up. It will save us a few hundred uh hundred dollars. My intent is to acquire that probably shortly. And then use that between that and the two other radars to kind of keep them all on service. Uh, my anticipation is the other two are continuing to go to require maintenance. While the maintenance might not be that expensive themselves. Uh, it still takes the radar unit out of service for up to several months because it has to be shipped out, repaired, shipped back, and that can be kind of a lengthy process. Uh, so that's my plans for equipment. At least at this point. Uh, also, February, you should see us finally able to retire, uh sorry, hire Jamie. Um, he will be filling our last spot on the roster, so this will bring us back up to full staff. Uh, so I think I've said before, his hire's been delayed because he got injured down in his original department. Uh, he's back. He's had the surgeries. All went well. Um, everything's good to go. He's back at his original department down in Glendale. And my hope is to have him start here in February. I'm hoping to introduce him to you in one of the meetings in February, which I will make Michelle happy.
All right.
Enjoy those.
I do.
Um. The other kind of big news for us for the month is it's December. I saw us working a lot to kind of upgrade our our operations as far as data analysis and collection. Um, the CAD system we use is capable of more than we've historically been using it for. Uh, you maybe saw that a little bit, I think, in last month's report. There was a big jump in uh complaints between what we. Reported the month before that and the month after that. That was largely to do with the fact that the CAD system tracks complaints. Better than our pen and paper system that we've been using up to this point does. So uh it's gonna give us a more accurate account of things. Uh, and and a better way for us to track, including potentially even and and. I'm grateful to say Fredonia doesn't have any prime hotspots. But it does give us an opportunity to kind of look, you know, maybe we got. You know, a lot of complaints in this area. Maybe we need to look at that and see what's under the fact. Uh, the other thing it already has done is uh, I don't know if you noticed, I added a category called warnings. Um, in the past, largely because of the pen and paper system, it was just too hard to track. Otherwise, we only really took credit for our traffic stops and citations. That doesn't give a fuller accurate picture of what we do. Uh, December is a great example. In December, uh we had, I wanna say, three or four traffic stops. I'm sorry, three or four citations. Uh, but we had fifteen warnings. So I expect my officers to use good and appropriate discretion when dealing with these stops. If they upon their contact feel that they can make a positive impact on the driving. Or otherwise behavior of the person with the warning, I expect a warning. Uh, if I thought were relieved, they convinced them that a citation is more appropriate, I expect the officer's station citation. In the past, they've not done an accurate or appropriate job of tracking them. So uh moving forward, you're gonna start to see our our traffic stops and lead to warnings being listed on our direction file. Uh, finally, uh as as some of you, I believe most of you have already noticed. Uh, as of January first, uh we we set up a Fredonia Marshall's Facebook page. Uh, that is up and running. Um. The feedback that I believe uh Chris has gotten so far has been positive. And I intend to be tackling and maintain it. I want to get several entries on that site per week. Obviously, that's going to vary depending on just how they're going on. There's nothing going on. Uh, but I've intended to use this as an informational and just a community outreach program. I think that was it for my comments. Any questions?
No, if the if you know me, um, you know, I love the technology, so it's really cool seeing you uh implement some. Some new technologies, some just bringing us up to up to speed. I think Facebook was a a real good uh idea for outreach. Even when there's nothing going on in the village, you can always throw out safety tips or whatever. You know, snow's coming, stay off the road, whatever. You know, I like that. I really like I really like what you're doing over there at the marshal's office.
And because I am one, and I need to be a little humorous. Thankfully.
Like that, too. Anybody else for Marshall?
What do we know about the uh the Fredonia sign? It was vandalized.
We know very little at this point. Uh, we did check. There were no cameras with visibility there. Ironically, the cameras that would have given us the best angle were the ones on Fort Washington State Bank, which.
Are down. Yeah. With good reason.
It is, it is uh it's evident that it was not weather related. The kind of weather that would be required to do that level of damage would have damaged everything else around there. Uh, it was too isolated into that one sign. Um, my current thoughts were that's and and again, I went up there and looked, there are no tire tracks. Um, there were there's nothing indicated was a vehicle accident or something that caused it that way. The current working theory I have is that perhaps multiple people or a small group. Were yanking on the sign, trying to dislogic, and it just chattered on. Uh, that's the most reasonable explanation I have at this point, but it is a theory. Um, we we brought out to our school resource officers. Uh, to see if maybe anyone was doing any bragging in the high schools. Nothing. Uh, we had stuff out on Facebook. We got no clues, no.
So it wasn't graffiti or anything? It was just damage?
Oh, it was. Yes, it was just outright damage. It was it was totally destroyed. It was shattered into multiple pieces.
Swam by there today. Was it? It wasn't uh re-erected, was it?
I'm sorry.
Was it? Was it? Was it damaged? Uh? Was it? Was it re-erected the sign or no? Is it still down?
Uh, it is still down. I believe uh there's a uh.
Yeah, we're in the process of replacing it, but that doesn't stop that we want to know what happened, right? And if there's parties responsible. Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have the old ones still doing. I know you like to keep things. Director Paulus.
It's a case of do some fingerprinting.
You're right. Can't fingerprint that.
Uh, so having something changing at this point, I don't have a map.
Okay.
So unfortunate.
Couldn't have been a snow bill coming around and going through it.
There have been tracks. Uh, there there would have been tracks that are there simply aren't. Uh, in fact, the the tracks of uh Eric's vehicles when they went up there to remove it were still there. So you know, it was it was it was kind of stark that there weren't any other tracks, especially with the uh. Uh, plants and the stuff around it, there would have been outright indications. Only that touched there was the signs and the light, which looks like it was either the sign collapsing on the light. Or as I said, if my working theory is correct, the people yanking on it maybe fell back and they haven't decided. Again, I want to reiterate that that's simply a work.
Yeah. All right, fire chief.
Okay, so we're gonna review two months here of information very quickly. Uh, in the month of November, um at our business meeting, we formed two groups for investigative vehicle replacement. Uh, we are looking at replacement of our ladder truck six sixty and our ambulance uh estimated replacement time would be twenty twenty eight. But I tasked them with uh looking at pricing and lead time uh was what they were asking. So. Um, they formed that, but we did welcome a new member uh to our junior firefighter program, Max Pester. He is a eighth grader uh that joined uh department there. So welcome him. Uh, special notes, we did have a kitchen player at four oh one, but on the avenue, that's on the corner of the avenue, walking street. Uh, again, this is going back a couple of months, so um. Then our call volumes, uh nothing abnormal with call volumes. It was average month of month of November. We will jump into December. Um, so again, that group that then we formed uh for ladder truck review and for the ambulance. Um, we have a replacement target of twenty twenty eight for both of those. Uh, ladder truck will be over thirty years old at that time, and ambulance will be at thirteen. Typical uh replacement times on those are thirty years for the ladder truck and ten years for ambulance. Uh, but ladder truck varies in price tag. They keep back with the information of one point two, one point four million dollars. And there's a four year lead time on that. We need to look at budgets and have a finance committee meetings, I believe, and and as time more amount of stations found that because. Four years up, you made a decision now for something that we're going to purchase four years. Ambulance, um similar situation there. Um, we're looking at three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred thousand dollar replacement, thirty six monthly time on that vehicle. So that's a three year lead time there, so. Um, and then uh going to, well, we have BP screening here coming up. Uh, well, it was yesterday. It's two days ago. Uh, and then the uh, sorry, that should be December call volumes. Uh, we had a little bit of a little bit of uptick in fire calls and also ambulance incidents there. Um, but we ended the year with twenty nine uh paramedic intercept, our new paramedic program. Um, and then our call volumes were off with the ambulance is the part that sticks out here with one hundred sixty eight calls this past year. So in twenty twenty four, we have one hundred sixteen calls. It's thirty six more than we ever had. Um, and I attribute the twenty nine of those I can attribute to paramedic intercepts that added to it, so. Um, but that program has been doing very, very well. Uh, in in January, certainly on January first, I was contacted by randomly fire team. Um, and we have now extended our paramedic intercept services up to a random point here. So we've had few calls here in the month of uh January already who went out and participated and went on call without their paramedics. Um, but I think that's pretty much it.
All right. Like to give us give you guys a a shout out uh for your uh fire and ice response so earlier this week. Uh, that. What you do is is amazing. I I I wouldn't want to be there.
Yeah, that was probably the coldest call that I would say that we that this period of party marketing has been coming to mid eighties. Well, that one happens by our belt was probably the coldest and this one probably ranked the second coldest. It was minus seven. I went into the yard down there and I was like, oh. But uh everything went very, very well. Quick as far as the. Operations of it, we cleaned up and on a very short period of two hour timeframe, which is awesome. Um, we brought vehicles back to our station that were sitting on the road that were being used. We put like horse ladder truck feedback in our station. Uh, we worked at state marks and increased it up to make sure that they're not getting the nine dollar equipment well.
Again, thanks for your bravery and professionalism, you and your your crew.
Chief, the uh the possible arson on Fredonia Avenue is a Zaki County sheriff investigating it?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, they have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's not possible? It is an arson. Okay, all right.
That could go better like that.
Right. I got you.
Any other questions for fire chief? If not, we'll move on to public works and wastewater treatment plans. For. Which one of you wants to go?
The report is in your packet. Um, all my good stuff will be next month. Put in the water main break, yeah. The well issue. Um, I guess just an update on the cold weather. We had one residence freeze up and one business that broke pipe.
No.
So. Hopefully, that's it.
Hopefully, that's the last of it for the year. Cold weather. All right. Anything else from the rest of the crew? Good?
Are you gonna be able to patch anything over by the water main break?
I do not want to because it's probably gonna cost quite a bit just to put hot notch in there, so. I don't plow that area, so I'll just tell the guy to plow it, make sure it doesn't hit it at full force.
Brandon, don't hit it. Brandon, don't hit it.
But I was hoping we filled it tight to the top there, hopefully you can maybe get that done right away in spring.
Right, anything else for public works or wastewater treatment? Alright, moving on to our clerk.
Um, so we have a spring primary on February eighteenth. Um, there's one race on the ballot, the state superintendent of public instruction. Um, the election had a really tight turnaround for deadlines for postings, so we got that taken care of right away. We're working on staffing, cleaning up the voter list, processing absentee ballot requests, all the same stuff we did in November. Um, oh, we're going to Forest Haven on the twenty seventh and twenty eighth, and the public test is scheduled for February eleventh. Um, and then I gave you all of our, um, in-person absentee voting hours. And then we're on to the next election, which is April first. There are three trustee and one village president positions up for election. Um, I think by now we all know the candidates who have submitted, uh, ballot access documents, um, for president Peter Lenz. For trustee DJ Siring, Peter Lenz and Don Doorward. Um, we do lots for ballot placement, um, and the candidates will appear as they're listed. Um, chicken permit applications, we've received two so far, it's very exciting. Um, dog licenses, ATV parking lot signage, um, are all up and we're ready to get the ball rolling on those internal processes. Um, water bill, tax payments, um, the open space survey. Um, alcohol permitting is already starting, um, and minutes and agendas and all the various.
Questions for the clerk?
Do you have any registered write-ins?
Not yet. No one has. February fourteenth is the deadline, so Friday, so I'll be here until five o'clock to accept the CF one L.
That's the latest you can file.
That is the very last moment in time that you can file to be a registered write-in. Okay? So the write-in's name won't appear on the ballot, it won't appear in my vote. People will have to write that person's name in. And all the CF, all the CFL tells us is that we count those votes. They weren't registered, we wouldn't count a write-in vote. Uh, so they need to register in order to tell us to count them, that person.
I think it's nice to see the, the candidates here, you know, learning what's, uh, going on ahead of, ahead of time. I mean, Don's been here for a while, but he, he really knows what's going on. But the others, uh, it's, it's good to see active participation even, even before the date. Alright, if there's no other questions for our clerk, we'll move on to our treasurer.
Still working on getting the federal access to both of those to electronically file. Things are coming along pretty good. Leaving the first quarterly water billing. I did have to text Melissa once just to get through. Believe early next week, I need to try doing broad sense for the auto pay, people that have been signed up, so I need to do that. Otherwise, you know, just plugging along, it's been a lot of activity coming in, you know, with the water payments. Still a lot of taxpayers coming in. Tomorrow will be the third of Friday, we started Friday hours. First one, I only had a few people come in and one phone call, uh, last week was a lot of activity. So, so tomorrow will continue to be a lot of activity, especially with everyone being, because of the danger for water reveals.
Questions for the treasurer?
It's nice to see that we have some activity on Fridays. You know, even if you're here half a day, I think it's very helpful for our residents to be able to have another option um, instead of the forties a week, so thank you for, for coming in on Fridays.
I'll just add quick that you'll see on your agenda here, there's a new section here that, uh, treasure absence is going to be including. Um, so right on the front of the agenda, we have our individual accounts as they, as they are, were reconciled the previous month. So you guys will see an ongoing tracking of our account balances, where we're at for each of our funds. So that's great for obviously not only you guys, but the transparency we have with the community, so thank you to Julie for putting that together.
Next, we have our Mid Moraine Municipal Association Designated Representative, otherwise known as M-M-M-Matter. Don Doorward.
Alright. You hear the reports come in almost a month after the middle because we don't get minutes back and whatever, um, just basically what I remember. The, uh, we had, uh, two speakers come in, one of us was, uh, here in Doran, was and our agent in this area for at least two years, that's any sort of area. And, uh, Agent, uh, Schneri. Yeah, both of those are, uh, EOR enforcement officers. They've had kids in the whole field, they're in, so they're. Now, what they, uh, they were explaining at Act seven three created statewide license. And all of this stuff is in chapter three, uh, if you want to check on it. Uh, those are statewide licenses, they figured that would be something that people would, would want to jump at. There are multiple. For multiple, uh, municipalities that they go around, they have a number of different. Um, we have, for the state, we have nine people, I believe that, uh, handled the work of clearing these people and checking them out. And before they issued licenses, they do always, uh, check the home base on that and, uh, local authorities and things as part of their research. Um, this was created, uh, first, uh, for, it's, it's still a, a s- a solution with you for a problem, put it that way. And, uh, currently there's two people statewide that applied for and got one of these licenses. Uh, that means they can, they can tip our anywhere to state. Um, they don't have to be registered to specific municipality or tavern or whatever establishment, whatever. Um, I'm not sure what they were trying to make easier at the state with Act seven three doing this, but, uh, it's, it's one of those things where they're trying something new. And this probably won't be the dead long live, there's still taking hearings on this, they're still taking input to find out, uh, how this is working or not, working in different areas, um. Nothing is said in stone yet, so, uh, anyone that wants one of these or one of the other, I would prefer uh, alternative license. Should stop by their clerk and their clerk can, uh, sort this out as far as which one would be the best suggestion for them to do, or which one, if you want to do that, this is the way you want, something like that, so. Um. It's, uh, it would be a while before this is totally rectified and set in stone, uh, and codified and statutes. If, we forget, but, uh, they're still working on it. So I don't know if, uh, if we should keep our eye on this. There's something that I might, uh, at one of our, at our, one of our next legislative meetings in Jackson, we have, uh, Senator Pham as a guest speaker. And I'll touch base with him once and see once how this is going along. I get to talk to Rob too, when I see them more often, and find out how this is going. Uh, but I, the way it was explained, and, uh, the way the agents see it, this doesn't seem to be something that's going to be long lasting. And they don't make the laws, they just go, they just, uh, work by the laws that legislature makes. So, we'll find out, I'll keep an eye on that. You know, this is coming down the road. Any questions?
Thank you. Alright, if there's no other questions for Don, um, last on the list is our Ozaki County District Two Supervisor, he is not present here tonight, but he, he did give us a uh, report which is printed out in front of you and, uh, I believe, yeah, in your packet. Um. I don't think it, uh, I don't think anybody needs me to read it to them, so, um, if you're interested, it is in the packet. And if, can get you a copy if you really want one. So, but thank you, uh, Bruce Poppy for, uh, submitting a report. Wherever you are. Alright, that concludes the reports, so, uh, on to items for discussion and or action. First, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one. A resolution allowing for five election inspectors at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five spring primary election. Care to speak on that, Michelle?
I'll say a little bit, um, spring primary elections, I don't think anybody will be surprised to hear that they have a weak turnout historically. Um, and, um, there's only one race on the ballot and our team is still fresh off the November election, are highly trained, they're ready to roll. Um, so I think five election inspectors per shift will be sufficient to get us through.
Thanks, Marshall.
So where are they in the, in the primaries?
Why are they? Um.
There were one too many.
So I'm asked, this is for election inspectors, so my team that's going to work on election day. Um, so there, I just need five team members. Yeah, so I don't need, usually there's seven or more, um, but we don't, we don't need that. Um, no, so we'll save a few bucks and not make everybody travel out in the cold. It'll be more than enough to get us
Yeah.
to take care of every voter that comes in that day.
It's just for the DPI, right?
Yeah, there's three candidates on there, so.
Uh, I think for the last spring primary, we had a hundred and twenty one voters.
It's more than I would expect.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, I make a motion to approve resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one. Allowing for five election inspectors at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five spring primary election.
Oh, second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? If not, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up. Motion to approve the purchase of, uh, twenty twenty four Ford F one fifty crew cab pickup truck, fire department rescue vehicle not to exceed fifty three thousand dollars as approved in the twenty twenty five CIP. Brian, you got anything to say?
Well, yes, um, so typically this, this vehicle is used for, uh, running to rescue calls as a first responding for our non-ambulance people, uh, to help out. It's also a cheat's vehicle, we want to respond to visual aid calls, and then it's also used for training, uh, for, to train to like LTs. We currently use a two thousand seventy expedition that we have, um, in place there, uh, that needs to be, that needs to be replaced. Um. Looking to replace that with a bike vehicle, but the cost of a suburban or expedition is outside of my price range. Uh, so we went down the path of utilizing or, you know, that one bit of port over, uh, and then putting a truck up on that with a slide out bed. So, uh, I, I did update prices tonight, uh, with a new predates that came up. Uh, this was pre-Christmas, one that you're seeing in your package is pre-Christmas predates, um, so now January first, they give you new prices of fifty thousand seven hundred forty one dollars. Um, that is for the truck, the cap and the side of a box hall, uh, as one package from EBS four. Um, we will still need to, uh, put some D L on, we'll be putting out the sign, we'll give all our expense, we're putting D L sign. Um, and then place some light signs. That would be done in general communications. We will utilize up that fifty five dollars that we can do that operation wise.
What is its original tone, right now?
If, um, we are, I, I've gone to lap the own vehicles that are purchased from off the lots, um, just as a cost savings of not painting them, repainting them yellow and spending fifty thousand dollars to repaint the vehicle, it's got a nice paint job on the ground. This vehicle is listed as used, um, uh, it is, it is only got eight hundred and ninety two mile signs. Um, they took it off the lot, this is one they brought me back in December, they took it off the lot, made it a little um, that they would loan out, and I said, why am I on that truck? And so he gave it to me at a little discounted price, um, and then I will also get five extra months instead of just a thirty six thousand, five hundred three-year warranty, I am getting forty two months, but minus one month, so I get forty one months warranty on it, so.
The, the lights and modi- other modifications aren't going to do anything to warranty status, so.
How do you feel about going from a suburban or SUV to a pickup truck? You think it'll still be useful?
Good, yeah, I think it'll be good, right now, some already messed up flights, we got a tray go from the backseat, uh, from, from the middle seat, I should say, right now. This will be on a slide out tray and it'll be all there.
Sorry, you're going to, uh, I see on your notes here that you're going to put the old vehicle up on auction site or?
Well, yeah, we'll sell it some way, it's on top of here, and you can throw it out there and get some money, guess for a restaurant, great. Uh, the value that, uh, that a vehicle has right now, I'm telling you, it's a five thousand. So, I don't expect to get much support, but, um, it's something, you know.
Chief, you said fifty five thousand dollars?
Is what fifty five thousand is what the budget number is, but it's fifty thousand seven hundred forty one.
Okay, so I have the motion for fifty three thousand dollars, yeah, is that sufficient? So would you like to change that to a different number, or do you feel like fifty three is the appropriate number?
Yeah, and that'll encompass everything you need?
I think you're just trying to make sure you have enough for the decals and the lights and all that. Good point.
Uh, yes. I mean, in a sense, it's going to have to get paid for out of the fire fund either way, so.
Alright. If there's no more discussion, we're, we'll entertain a, a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty four Ford F one fifty crew cab pickup truck or the fire department rescue vehicle, not to exceed fifty three thousand dollars as approved in the current CFP. Oh, second.
A motion and a second. Call the question, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, next up, Eric wants to spend more money.
Eric?
Well, next up is a motion to approve twenty twenty four Ford F three fifty pickup truck for the wastewater treatment plant vehicle not to exceed forty seven thousand three hundred sixty five and fifty cents. Eric, what do you have to say for yourself?
Uh, true, the plant currently does not have a truck, they use one of the PDWs, so I'd like to get the plant their own truck. Uh, true, the plant currently does not have a truck, they use one of the DPWs, so I'd like to get the plant their own truck, they make their own money. They can have their own truck. And going to a three fifty is to pull the sewer jetter trailer that was just purchased.
Yeah, right now, we have to do that with our two truck.
Uh, we could use one of the three fifties, the mini dunks to use it. But that, uh, sewer back and the jet are pretty heavy, so. Right now, my uses are two fifty, which even with the leave pick up, that thing lays on the ground.
So while this is not specifically itemized in the CIP, it. Does fall within the budget since there was a. An underspend on previous spending.
Uh, so the, the extra money there comes from, we were talking about getting a sewer jetter truck. Uh, realized what I had budgeted wasn't enough for a new one. And to purchase a used one, I was at thirteen years old already. Uh, so we ended up going with a trailer which came in under a hundred. And I had a hundred and fifty in the CIP for purchase of the sewer jetter, truck or trailer.
And now we can be more versatile.
Yep, considering we had a, uh, two sewer backups. The last one was on Fillmore and it was, that animal was. Thirty feet off the road, and there's no way you'd get a truck in there. Unless you wanna pay for a driveway and.
So the trailers.
The trailer would, we could build a back in there with a pickup and use it.
And it's, uh. Proving it's. Or. Alright.
It will, once we get her.
And I see there is an incentive, uh. The reason you're bringing it now is because the fire department is looking at purchasing the vehicles we're trying to get. Gotta save money somewhere, come on.
Well, luckily, Eric, he doesn't get a vote, so.
Make a motion to, uh. Proceed with purchasing the, uh, F-three fifty twenty twenty-four Ford. At a price not to exceed forty-seven, thirty, three sixty-five and fifty cents.
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second? Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Alright. So next is one of my favorite ones every year. Uh, which is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four contribution to the service award program. For the fire department eligible members, we have, uh. Speaker here, Chris.
Chris, I'm the Assistant President G for the Fire Department. Uh. I guess my first question to you all has to be every one of them.
That's why we're doing it now.
It's still January.
So you have it, you have it. We'll, we'll talk about that first, but I should probably give a little bit of explanation of the numbers. SAP is the Service Award Program. It started in twelve, in two thousand two, the state came up with this idea that. If we set up this program, it's kinda like a retirement plan for a couple of years, uh, we're not eligible to get the state plan or anything like that, so. Uh, they came up with this, and their big thing was they will match what you guys contribute to us. So that's kind of the, the history of it. Uh, we've been in the program since two thousand two, actually. It, it is a, it, it was initially set up as a retirement intention kind of a, uh. All of that, all this with any recruitment, but I think we have a lot of guys that are kind of. Jumped out to, yeah, like on the bottom of that sheet is twenty twenty-three, that's what we did last year, just wanted to put a recap. We had a budget of almost fifteen thousand dollars. Um, trying to remember when we did that budget. You know, but we're talking about tonight, we actually came up with that number in December of twenty twenty-three. Passed on that number, decided that's the budget to run for the year twenty twenty-four and a little. So. Made up a number with really very little information, we've been hiring, you know, five, six, seven, five, five, five years. It's simply, this is the big wrong guess number. We have twenty-four members that were eligible in our department, eligibility is, uh, you need to put in your training time, you need to meet your minimum training requirements. Be eligible for SAP, it's a pretty easy, pretty straightforward. Performance, but we figured if our guys are coming to training, they're gonna start, they're gonna show their talents. You, you spent all that time doing all this training, you're gonna go to the cops, so we're not too worried about that. And we need them to be trained, we need them to understand what we're doing, so, uh, that's how we're using it. Last year, the state matched a month, it was four seven, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The bill to board. Contributed that amount, state matched that, that's the state's maximum amount. Every year it's going up, I think the first year was right around two hundred dollars.
There was like three hundred something.
It was, it was under, it was like two thousand, it was two something, it was two something.
It was two hundred?
Very low, uh, so they continue to increase that, I don't know, Holly, you know, part of this, but. So if we look at twenty twenty-four, they jumped that out of four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, but their maximum is to. To match what you guys, uh. Decide to contribute. There's no limit on you, you can contribute as much as you want, or technically contributing as little as you want. But that's the most states could imagine. Of both, in fact, I guess. We do have. A two, six, uh. Six members that are sixty-plus years old. Four of them, five of them are still active in the department, they're still in the system. The reason sixty years old is the, is the kind of important numbers, because at sixty, you're required to take a contribution, you try to, right? Get paid out of the program. Uh. That's the new rule that came in, and I'm not sure why they did that, but they did, uh, statements on that, so. Uh. As an example, I turn sixty. It's a number, I mean, I'm gonna have to take all my money out of it. But as long as I stay active, and I meet my requirements, I'll still be eligible for a contribution to your after that. Uh, it's just, it's, it's kind of a weird fortune thing, so that they, you know. Every year they have to bring home speaking to chat for that one years. We have twenty-two members that have fifteen plus years of service, the reason I bring that up is because. Ninety-five percent vesting is the most that you can get until you turn age sixty. And when you turn age sixty, you're a hundred percent vested. So we have members that started when they're twenty years old, after fifteen years, thirty-five years old, they're at ninety-five percent vesting, they did not get that last five percent. Till they turn sixty. And then they can, you know. Maxed out, state considers that a early withdrawal, a year penalty or whatever. And then just, uh. All the members that we have, have been in SAP since, or yeah, SAP since two thousand two. So that's left for information. Uh, okay, you see, you know, this is what we should make a motion for, because. It depends on the eligible members, it depends on what the state decides the maximum matches, what you guys decide, how much you're gonna contribute to it, so. Generally, what we do is, uh. Make a motion. For all eligible members, whatever. There happened, uh, last year, I didn't have a state, missed somebody. And, and part of this process is I post the listing, I post the hours, these are all people that are giving their contributions, and they have a lot, they have thirty days. Look at the sheet and make sure you're exactly right, and I had somebody call me up and say, hey, I need my money, that's our music, I was. Screwed up. I mean, firefighter, forty-eight dollars for requirement, calls, you just drive her, make the hours for requirement, you did, you gave us training, you was good to go. Uh. So I, I do make mistakes, it happens. But plan, the, the way it's all set up is, uh. You have thirty days of that, and, and, you know, we had that conversation. And then people call and complain, and it's like, oh, I can't, oh, we don't do the numbers, it's, you know. So that's why I have, if you have any questions on that email. Uh, otherwise, I would be looking for a motion to, uh. Intentionally just to go.
Alright, so. We have. Two, well, I guess three options. Uh, we have the fifteen thousand dollar budget, we could give them the full amount. We could match what the state is matching. Um. And have the reduced amount, and the third option, I guess. And I'd be really disappointed in this one, is, you know, we don't give them anything. Well. So I think historically, we give, we, we give the, uh, budgeted amount. So.
Yeah, I agree, they do a lot part of the identity, so. All on a volunteer basis.
So. I'll entertain any motions, uh, of, uh. Any of those options or anything in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four contribution to the SAP for fire department for eligible members of the. Full budget amount of fifteen thousand.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Can I just, can I just clarify quick? So the way it's listed in your board consideration is an exact number, that four ninety-five twenty-six. So if you're saying that you wanna use the full fifteen thousand, then I would argue the motion should be. Uh, something along the lines of spending fifteen thousand divided by the eligible members, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Got it. So is, is it six hundred for sure? Okay, well then, then just make that then the number then, and we'll be good.
So that's after the state contributes to twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-one.
No, this is our portion, okay.
Contribute the fifteen.
Okay. So the state is in a totally different amount that they get, okay, separately.
If you want me to make a new motion?
Yes, we use.
You're gonna step into your motion for the six hundred. Yep.
Enough, remember that we would take advantage of all the money the state wanted to give us. And the rest we would put in. A, uh, reserve account with the fire department, well, we don't do the separate reserve and whatever, it goes back in the general fund. Um, but it's, it seems as though we're doing a good job of making sure that we carry on that. Uh, that legacy of doing that, you know, we, we need to understand that.
Okay, that'll revise my motion. Uh, motion to approve the twenty. Twenty twenty-four contribution of six hundred dollars for eligible member. Eligible, eligible fire department member, uh, to the service. War program.
Second.
Alright. So the current mo, we have a current motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As far as the clerk is, uh, how did you take that down then?
Motion to. A motion to approve twenty twenty-four contribution of six hundred dollars for eligible fire department member to the service award program.
Oh, well, that's, we haven't been doing that. That's not traditional, anything.
That's not tradition.
It would be the, it would be the four ninety-five twenty-six for eligible.
So Jess's original motion and the second is for the full fifteen thousand dollars, so that comes to six hundred dollars per eligible member. So Jess's motion was for more than the four twenty-nine.
Exactly what was budgeted.
Sure, that's. That's, that's gonna get lost in. Lost in history. With our traditionism in doing this. We don't have a reserve fund to put the balance of the fifteen in anymore. And we don't have. You know, really anything as far as, uh. Written, what they do, last year. We did the eleven five eighty. For twenty-four. Um, I don't know if, if the math worked, if that comes to four seventy-nine and twenty cents. There are twenty-four. People. Um, but, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna give out an extra. An extra, um, hundred dollars apiece. Just in case somebody might not have looked at the bulletin board and realized that they. Well, they missed or whatever, and they can come back and, well, we'll just give you some of this. Because the, the money gets divided up equally between everybody. That's eligible. And if somebody becomes, realizes that, well, I'm eligible too, before they divide up all the money, they just. Okay, well, then we'll make this twenty-six and divide that twenty-six by the six hundred dollar. There's a lot of fungibility in this, in this whole thing. And the way we were doing it is we leverage. For the number of people that are eligible, we. We took out of the budget enough money to. Leverage the entire sum that they're eligible from the, from the state. So they get like two X instead of X. And we provided the other X. And then, uh. And we made some kind of note or something in our. Um. In our budget future or whatever, some kind of flag in there, so that. So that function doesn't get lost in the shelf. You know, or you can do it the way that the motion was, was made, it's.
Well, I, I, we do have a, uh, motion and a second on, on the floor, so I mean, we'll. I think we need to vote on that, if that, uh. Isn't the, the will of the board, then we can revisit and. We'll go back to, uh. You know, maybe offer, offer a new motion. So I. Leave protocol at this point be to call the question and see how the votes follow. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
Motion passes with one dissent.
Actually, thirty-nine bucks. That was decided in November of last year. Without that number. Three and a one. That's, that's, I mean, we had to make that number back.
So. Alright.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems that we've been budgeting fifteen thousand regardless of the number of members that we have, so if we have least members, they get a bigger amount, if we have more members, they get a little bit less.
Alright. Moving on to our final item for discussion. Um. The, continuing the discussion of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and the potential sewer rate increase. Um, since our last meeting. Uh. We've, the list has been assembled with priorities next to it. Um. So. Uh, who would like to speak to that, Eric, or?
I can just give a quick summary here and then you guys can discuss. Um, so before you is the one pager that I sent out to all of you over, over a week ago now, just so you had some time to digest. Hopefully, this is easy to read, just keep in mind, as I'm sure you've learned, this, the whole wastewater treatment plant process. Is a pretty complicated one, right, with a lot of details, a lot of terms that maybe we're unfamiliar with, this was an attempt to somewhat simplify that. Uh, in layman's terms. Um, and then we worked really closely with our DPW team and, and Ellers. In order to truly rank these based of priorities, and then what the associated costs would be. So if you follow along in this chart here, we have a ranking system on the left side, red means, ooh, it's big, it's scary, we should probably get this replaced. On down to green where it's, it's more of once than, than maybe needs. Um, you have the. Um, you have the description of the item, you see what the function is. You see an explanation uh from the DPW side of why it's either failing or why replacement is recommended. And then you have, again, the estimated cost that Strand had put together. Um, it was asked by Trustee Barts at the last meeting, uh, if we needed to assign a timeline. Uh, what would those dates would look like? You see uh the attempt to do that on, on the right side. And then down at the bottom in the separate chart, you see if we did those ranking projects. How much would it cost? And then the breakdown for the average resident. Um, so we have four different scenarios here, and again, you guys can brainstorm other scenarios if you want. Uh, the first is completing ranking just number one, which is the highest priority. Then one and two, one through three, and then completing all them, one through nine. So you can see the costs uh continue to go up from one point eight million being the lowest all the way up to six point two million. Don't forget through the clean water fund loan, we automatically get ten percent principal forgiveness. So the actual numbers of how much we'd be borrowing is what's reflected uh at the end of the equation. If we then needed to increase our, I'm sorry, when we do need to increase our uh sewer rates. Because of it, you see the average annual dollar increase. And again, this is if we did all of it right away, if we did the whole increase, what that dollar impact would be. And you see it broken down by per quarter or per month. And then finally is the recommended phasing. If you did want to phase in these rates. Um, as Ellers had, had thought, then you have the recommended phasing percents on the right side too. Um, so again, one way to look at it, we'll just start with number one here. Let's say you only want to replace the primary clarifier and bio tower and convert the aerobic digester. They would start off as one point eight nine million. It would end up being a one point seven million dollar clean water fund loan. That would result in an average annual dollar increase of fifty-eight dollars and four cents. You could either. Decide to increase the rates right now by that amount. Or you could decide to phase it in by twelve percent, twelve percent, and eleven percent. Which means that the burden of that fifty-eight dollars wouldn't be all right away, it would be incremental over the next th- three years. Um, and then again, that per quarter, per month breakdown is there too. Um, I know that going through this exercise was valuable for staff and I'm sure Eric can, can attest. Uh, because when you're talking about the system itself, it can be easy to get, you know, bowled down. And the intricacies of this program, but hopefully you guys have a better understanding of what this is like. And then seeing the per quarter and per month impact. Um, at least to me, and again, I'm not a, a resident here in your town, but it, but it certainly makes the. These num-, these big scary numbers a little bit more easier to, to digest, right? It's easy for us to look at six point two million dollars and get thrown back and say, how in the world are we gonna pay for this? But then when you see it broken down by a hundred and twenty-two annually, thirty dollars a quarter, ten dollars per month. At least it makes those numbers a little bit more realistic as we're trying to communicate that to our, our taxpayers. Uh, so hopefully this chart was helpful. Um, I'll pause there. Uh, Director Paulus, do you have anything you want to add? To these priorities?
Six. Nine, I mean, those could wait, I wouldn't put those out. Forbid that could be something that we can slowly put into our budget every year. And I think it would be a lot less than what it's intended, just because you're not paying on the engineering fee. And subcontractors.
Basically, my conversation with you on Sunday was uh. Immediately, obviously, is number one. Because we absolutely do that. But all of these other things are going to need to be done when? When do you estimate?
I'd say we don't start with this in five years, so I did, uh, I don't know if you saw that, Kurt. The packet I gave you.
This packet?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
So if you look at all the holes and pieces that are missing, that is what we're walking on and that's what we're working on. So. Luckily, it didn't fail when Mike was on it or I was on it, because I mean, that's. A nice load, it was held on by one bolt when, when she failed.
Eric, are you referring, uh, did you s- send me something separate from this email here?
No, I printed everything off very soon.
This, this thing? Yeah.
No, there's a packet.
Oh, this, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So if you look at some of the holes in the pipes and the tower that is holding the cat locked up, will be locked up. I think the priority would get moved up there. Uh, we did fix as much as we could. In a short period of time while it was down.
And what, what, what are you talking about?
These are the clarifiers.
Clarifiers, okay, so that we're talking about two, three, and four.
Yeah, so we did temporary fix it again. But there's always so much you can fix till it's not there anymore.
And here's my question, so. If we don't do this now, will we do it within five years? What's it gonna cost in five years?
Uh, I think, obviously, I don't need to go back and say. COVID is the issue of why a lot of prices have gone way up. I think a lot of people thought by now prices would have came down or stabilized, they haven't. I don't know.
So if we don't improve it now, what, what is it gonna cost our residents in five years?
Then I think part of the other thing that we need to think about too is if we're not gonna do all of this and we're gonna pick and choose. The items that need to be done that may have a little bit of a longer. Timeline to it, how much are we gonna have to stick into that? Continue to fix it, right? So if you guys are fixing some of these towers and some of these components. We're doing that today, well, what happens next year when it's not so great? Now we're sticking how much money into it. And then in twenty twenty-seven, we're gonna have to stick how much more money into it again, and then maybe we were halfway to the cost of replacing it.
Yes.
So I think the, and. If someone had to quote me, I think that clarifier fix. Just put it back together, get it running, was a hundred and seventy thousand. And I was down for, what was that, like, three months?
Well, summer, yeah.
And mind you, that is. One was the clear where it went. You cannot find parts for this, everything is now custom-made, they're fabricated, everything in the shop, make it work.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
Let's scare everybody for a second. We don't fix this stuff. And it keeps breaking and it keeps damaging. What is it gonna do to the water? What's it gonna do to the output? What, what does that detrimental part look like?
Uh, I think when we submit, I mean, everything goes off in numbers when I submit to the DNR. And if my numbers are beyond what the DNR has set for me. Then it highlights when Mike submits it or Tessa, that you are over your limit, why? We have to explain why. And then what happens is then when the permit comes up and they see all these plays that we've been hitting. Then they're gonna say, alright, now because you are failing on your numbers. You have to submit reports or you have to start doing an upgrade. And now we're gonna help you along.
Yeah, we become Port Washington and.
Yeah, yeah, so randomly, Port Washington, the other ones that waited, 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 now they're saying, okay, now the DNR's standing there and saying, now we're gonna help you do it. And that's what we don't want.
Yeah, we wanna get in front of it, for the DNR. Basically demands it of us.
And to go on with that, was it two years ago, three years ago when I came about. Asking the board to approve doing our own in-house lab and state-certified lab. So when Mike's running a test and he sees, holy man, these numbers. Our DNR engineers can be out here today, we can re-sample it, we have that time. When we sent it out, it came back, we had to report it. So it could be a sampler error, could be a personnel error, could be the way the plant was run in that day. So we have that timeframe to fix it. Now. Doesn't mean, okay, we test Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and three of those days are bad, now we're doing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that, that's not how the plant is supposed to function. And, and that's what we're starting to see, we're changing our days to help. Our numbers meet the permit.
I'd like to say something that. I looked at these first two. And, 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 and I've been emphasizing reasonableness because seventy percent ain't gonna cut it. Over three years. Looking at these first two options and. Yeah, I'm not saying that, you know, we're gonna make up our mind today, obviously we're not, but when I look at these first two options, they look a little more palatable. One says twelve, uh, the first one is twelve percent, twelve percent, eleven percent. Maybe that doesn't work, maybe you could go to the second option, sixteen percent, sixteen percent, fourteen percent. I, I look at the numbers. And people are suffering right now. I mean. I wrote something out because I, you know, I wanna just say something. Uh, I, when I write things out, it, it comes out better. We are at a stage where we need to look at the taxpayers in the face. And we need to be accountable, a seventy percent raise over three years is not responsible. Um, there are families out there struggling. Because of inflation, because the property taxes went up. There are elderly people out there with fixed incomes that can't afford this stuff. We need to look, look them in the face and say, is this the right thing? I understand that things need to be fixed, but let's do it piecemeal. Not saying that we shouldn't fix anything. And we're losing one of our major businesses, Guy O'Neil, we, we're not guaranteed that, that is, that's gonna be bought out yet. If they can't provide these costs now, what, you know. What future businesses will be attracted to us now that these costs will be so high? Who's gonna come in when they know that this is a tax L? And then our, 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 our uh water rates and our sewer rates are so high. We need to find better solutions, we owe that to the citizens of Fredonia. And frankly, I'm disappointed with some of the people on the board. Who are just ready to stick it to the people of Fredonia. We can't do that. Regarding that, my understanding is that the work done to clarify it was not a band-aid. It was fixed. I understand that you needed to do quite a bit of things on it, but it was not a band-aid. Quite frankly, uh, Ellers has been telling us what we need to do, well, we pay them. And we need to tell them what we need to be, what we want to be done. It's, it's getting to be backwards where they're just telling us what to do. Well, we're paying Ellers a fee. They're consultants. Uh, there was talk of Port Washington too, and we didn't. Uh, want, want to end up be like them. We're not Port Washington. We're Fredonia, okay? And Port Washington is six times our size. They're six times our size, they have different needs and there's different set, uh, situations. Uh, involved in that. Uh, we're comparing apples to oranges, in my opinion, when we say, well, we don't wanna be like Port Washington. Disappointed with some people in the board that wanna say, well, we're gonna just do a seventy percent rate hike. It's ridiculous. Uh, we also need to disband this talk of. We can't leave this to another board. Well, if we, we would act on this now, another board. You come in and change it all the same. You know, nothing is, is fixed. The bottom line, we have to be responsible and keep rates reasonable. One last thing, I, I, I have to say, we, we have a new administration here in our presidency, I don't like to get politics involved in us, but. Fredonia is probably a far cry from the national politic, political scene. But we reflect. Things in some ways that happen nationally, I think. We can learn from them. What they're doing now is trying to, to serve the people better and we need to do the same. I, I think we can make raises. In the water rates, but it's gotta be reasonable. We can't just sit here and say, no, seventy percent. Over three years, I, I don't think that's reasonable, I don't think people can afford that.
Kurt, I'd just like to add, I know, uh, you're, you're, I think you're taking the Port Washington out of context. I don't care what Port does, I'm looking at the.
Well, but that's what people are saying.
I don't wanna be like Port Washington, as they did a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase in their sewer water rates. I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna do that for our citizens.
I, I, I.
I understand that. We're not Port Washington and we could do this gradually, not. Seventy percent, seventy percent is not much better than a hundred and sixty-seven.
So. This is the money right now. Water prices doing right now?
I'm willing to me.
Prices are going up, correct?
Yeah, for families too, for families.
Exactly. For families, for businesses, for everything. So we're looking at this uh. One point five million dollars today, it's going to cost us one point five million dollars. What's it gonna cost?
It's gonna cost us that today? How do you figure that?
I'm looking at. One, or I'm looking at one, I'm looking at two, it's one point.
Right.
Number two is one point five, one point five million dollars.
Right, and, and they have a twelve percent, twelve percent, and eleven percent raise.
I'm just saying.
And I think that's reasonable.
I listen to you, you can listen to me now.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna respond to what you're saying.
Jessica has the floor right now, Kurt.
I have the floor. I'm looking at this. It's one point five million dollars today to do number two. What is that price going to be in three years, in five years? What type of increase are we looking at? I'm guessing a minimum of a forty percent increase. So then if we are doing a one point five million dollars now. Or what's a forty percent increase of one point five? Quick question? Sixty thousand, so it'd be two point one million dollars that we demand from our residents. We are only going to be increasing. Yet every single time we delay this, it's going to cost us more. Chris, you made a comment earlier today about uh. Strand doing the uh presentation, how many years ago?
Actually, I don't know, Michelle, you were the one digging through the minutes.
Twenty nineteen, so in twenty nineteen Strand made this exact same presentation.
Oh, no, no, or almost.
Um, no, that was a, a different situation, but I. So I read the minutes from the twenty nineteen sewer rate increase. And they did an increase to for the grit. Right, um, and so he was saying kind of the same things that the equipment was antiquated, it needed to be replaced, and the board replaced it at that.
Yeah, um, but everything is going to be more expensive every single year. So why wouldn't we want to take this? And you know what? None of us want to increase.
As it stands right now, that, that strand is the only one that's bit on us. We could get several other bits. And they could, they could give us lower bits too.
Yes.
So we, we need, we need, you know, we, we need to, to have other bits on us because by law, there needs to be other bits.
Yeah, I'm not saying that there's not, but at the same time, if we do not do these right now, we are going to be hurting.
And I'm not saying not to do them right now. I never said.
You are, you are saying not to do anything.
I did not say that, Jessica, I said, I said, I, I, all I'm asking for is reasonableness. And I was looking at options one and options two. I said, there's, there's no set thing right now. But we're looking at. These first two options, right? Uh, and to me, that looks reasonable. If we need to do something else down the line, we could do that, but the thing is, is that seventy percent over three years, that's ridiculous. It's ridiculous, you, you guys are not even looking at yourselves, you gotta look at our taxpayers and, and. And be able to look at this freedom in the eye and to see, this is what we're gonna do. I, I don't, I don't think that's reasonable.
Stop. I have been in this village for twenty-two years.
What, are you telling me to stop?
You are interrupting me.
Huh?
You are interrupting me.
Let's have, have some.
I, I stopped. You don't have to tell me to stop, don't be rude. I, I'm, I'm, I am passionate about this because I am representing. The taxpayers of Fredonia, and everybody else should look at it the same way.
You are interrupting me.
Alright, we're gonna have some order. I'm not interrupting you, go ahead. Just don't tell me to stop.
Right, I'm gonna. Stop this right now. Jessica?
Yes.
Anything else to, to add to, to the conversation?
No, it's wrong our community. How much would this uh create? Would we be higher than the rest of the communities if we did a reasonable or we did an increase? What are our communities around us? Say randomly.
Yeah, that was in your, in the packet from the last time, I believe you weren't here, but let me sort of pull that up quick.
So what are randomly's rates? Because I would consider randomly as being. Equitable or quality between the two villages.
I'll just pull that up quick while you guys keep talking.
So Kurt, if I can address the comment about um. Wanting to take care of this before the next board comes in. I will agree with President Kirkie on his statement on that. We, as a board here and with our committees, have been sitting through these presentations. Since when did they come in October, I believe, was when they came in and. Gave the, the DPW the presentation. I don't feel right passing that off to the next board. We have new members that are gonna be coming on, we are gonna be stepping away. Right? I feel like these are decisions that. I feel like these are decisions that this board should make. We are invested in this. I don't want to push this decision past April. Now we're going to be asking our new board members to come in who haven't been involved in all the presentations from October. And all of the discussions and all of the packet, packet paperwork and all of the information our DPW director is giving us. I really don't feel like we should push it past April. I really truly believe this board should be able to make this decision. We should come to an agreement, whatever that ends up being. But I don't think that we should push it past.
And my response would be that two of them are here right now and are listening to, to the, the presentation. Now, they can get up to speed. And the thing is, is that. My second response to that, well, actually, three responses. My second response. Is that, um. I don't think that should be a reason to rush things either.
I don't think.
And I may, maybe I'd make a, a bad decision. And my, my third response to that would be is. What prevents them from when they come in, changing things? I mean, uh. You, I, I, I think it's, I'm, I think it's comparing apples to oranges, in my opinion.
As I was trying to say earlier, I have been in this village for twenty-two years. Twenty-two years in this village. And we have not. The boards have not, as Tiffany mentioned at the last previous meeting. We have not done our due diligence in doing a steady increase over the past twenty-two years. We have not had the increases that we should have. Over the last twenty-two years, so.
Yes, I found that information quick for you.
And I understand that, but to make up for that and one fell swoop seventy percent, I think. It's not reasonable. I think it can do it. I think you could do it piecemeal and do it at, at a better rate. And I think, I think the citizens of this village deserve better. And, and I'm sorry if I'm, I'm passionate about this because I'm trying to stick up for the people of this village. And I think quite frankly, some people are not. That's, that's, that's just my opinion.
The thing is, we're all, we're all paying it too. We're all paying. I'm not exempt from it. Don's not exempt from it. Jessica's not exempt from it. These increases affect us as well. Every time we've done something and approved budgets and approved whatever it is, I mean. The most recent one is the fire department and the EMS. That increased ours, everything for us too, but it's for the good of the community. This, while there might be some things that we can maybe shift around.
That's all I'm saying.
This is going to be for the good of the community in the long run. This isn't about what's best for us tomorrow. This is going to be about what's best for us for the next five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, until we have to go through this again.
And hopefully Eric and Eric on it. In, in those twenty years, we have actually done, our board has done due diligence about actually doing.
Having a plan to go forward.
Doing regular increases.
We have to fix this now.
And, and I'm not saying.
A good plan to go.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the increases. I'm just saying we need to be reasonable. That's the key thing. I don't know what, I don't know why people have a problem with reasonableness.
I think Don's had something to say.
Do it, do it the right way, so that people can.
Christine Doorward has floor.
All right, I, um. Talking, talking about reasonable, you go into your, your bottom box here where it's all got your percentage and everything. And you go per quarter, per month. If we. It's either thirty dollars and seventy-three cents per quarter or ten dollars and twenty-four cents a month. Now, I think that's reasonable. I don't know where you're getting seventy percent in all these numbers from.
Because that's what we were, that's what the original budgeting was, twenty percent.
Different though.
No. If we did twenty percent every year, Don, that was discussed, twenty percent every year. If you added that up. Over that three-year period, it would be a seventy percent increase in three years.
We weren't, we weren't including, uh, a ten percent to get ourselves back up to. Uh, the rate, back up to where the rate is. Or gives us a hundred and ten percent of, of operating expenses.
I never remember the ten percent being discussed. All I remember is the twenty percent each year.
Our, our financial, our financial advisor, Ellis, said that we need to be ten percent just to, just to get even.
I'm grading it and. With the refund where they give us that much back. We have to be in a position where we, our, we is. Garner a hundred and ten percent of our costs. Every year. Then they'll loan us the money and they'll give us ninety, a ten percent back. You know, on, on it, that, that would be our best way of softening the edge to the extent that we can of, of doing that.
Can you look at the bottom here?
Okay, but you, you're still looking at twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent, which equals seventy percent of all three years, so.
If you look at the bottom here. He has listed here, if we do everything on here, it is an additional one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety cents per year.
Yeah.
Or thirty dollars, seventy-three cents per quarter. So they would be paying an additional thirty dollars and seventy-three cents per quarter. That's what the increase would be, our citizens, residents, us, us. We would be paying thirty dollars, seventy-three cents in addition to our regular bill. Now, I don't know about you, but I got my bill and it was two hundred and three dollars and change, and that was my water and my sewer. Did similar usage? Okay, so I would be paying more two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-three cents per quarter. Instead of two hundred and three dollars.
Isn't that always varies compared to? It's, it's a multi-family.
It does.
First, you know, and.
And I am.
A lot of these multi-families. People are, are.
And I have.
Are struggling.
Three people in my family. Christine Dor, she has four. Rick, how many is in your family? How much water are you using?
Lots.
A lot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So all of us are being affected by it.
Yeah.
But the average family would be paying if we did everything on this list, and I am not asking for everything on this list. I am looking at. What we need to do right now. And what we need to do right now to ensure that in five years, we are not increasing, doing a dramatic increase in five years yet again. If we do it slow and steady. Like this, like what we have here. The twenty-one percent, twenty point five or seventeen percent or twenty-four, twenty. It's an average of thirty dollars extra per quarter that we're going to be charging our customers.
And we don't have a crystal ball that we know what's going to happen.
No.
In five years down, on the road, down the road.
No, thanks.
And, and I. And.
It is going to cost us more in five years. And so we are going to have to do a larger increase because. It's a, I'm guessing a minimum of forty percent above what these current.
But how do you know that? We don't know that. We don't have a crystal ball.
We don't know that, but we also in five years are going to have you on the board to help make these decisions. You're going to be, as a citizen. Screaming at the board because they made a decision that you don't like.
Oh, you're not going to be on the board either.
I'm not either, so.
I'm not either.
Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
What?
What that all brings us to is that we don't want to get ourselves in a situation. That Eric started to explain, which connects us to Port, but you know, I won't say that now, but there's nothing to do with Port. Where we get to the point where the DNR looks at our numbers and our reports and stuff like that. And says, well, you're not doing this fast enough. And then it goes and says, well, you're just, just piecemealing and whatever. We're just going to demand that you do this in the next three years.
And based on what Eric has said.
And I think you guys are overreacting a little bit. I really do. I think that things can be done at a gradual pace.
That's what they're doing in Port right now.
And we're not Port Washington. They have, they're a bigger city. And they have bigger.
If we do.
How do you know that, Don? How do you know that, Don?
Numbers, basically what Eric is saying.
Yes, I know. That's, that's what they do.
Based on what Eric is saying.
To the DNR.
It's not what Eric is saying.
As far as I know, the DNR is not, not breathing down our necks.
Not yet. That's the thing. What Eric just said is if they're testing our numbers. And our numbers hit a certain mark.
Yes.
And they flay. Okay, so you don't do the clarifier and you don't do the bio tower and you don't do the phosphorus building. We, no. We're done. We're not going to do this. And.
You don't have to do everything at once. We can do it gradually.
Not according to the DNR, not even.
So.
Set yourself up.
The DNR hasn't weighed into this.
Not yet.
Not yet. Not, that's what we're trying to prevent.
Uh, next year.
So, so we seem to, we seem to be.
I think you're overreacting.
All right, so we seem to be looking at a three-year window. You know, phasing it over three years. That seems to be the discussion here. Okay, we'll, we'll go with that. Uh, five items on here, number one, two, three, six and seven. All need to be covered within the next. According to the estimates on here. In the, in the next three years, well, I'm just.
I don't know how the fire happens. No, he needs it. I don't know.
I'm just going by what's prioritized here.
What Eric said previously, if I may jump in, we're term president. Eric mentioned that number five, number six and number nine. We could look at putting into CIPs and budgets for future years. So how about we pull those off immediately?
So those.
Did not look at that and we'd look at putting those into budget numbers.
That takes three hundred and eighty thousand dollars off of a five point eight million dollar tab. So negligible, really. Uh, something, but negligible. Uh, but so that still sticks us with about five point four, which is. Right between options three and four here, um.
Okay. President.
Yeah.
Can we go back to Chris's, my question to Chris about our current community's rates? And if we do this increase where we stand with current rates around the community?
Sure. Uh, and the last agenda, or sorry, the last meeting, if you remember, Lisa with Ellers had put together just a compilation of. Uh, municipalities, some of which are operate the same way we do, some, some that don't. So she cautioned us with that. Um, our most equal-sized neighbor, uh, Random, Random Lake. If you look at the, I don't know, I expect you to have it in front of you. There's a volumetric column, which is the rate. Uh, if we were to do all of the upgrades that we talked about with Ellers, which is about that five point, five and a half, four and a half, or sorry. Um, amount, that put us at a volumetric rate of about eleven dollars, eighty-nine cents. So just keep that number in your mind. So then when you look at some of the like-sized municipalities around us, Cedarburg, uh, Water Commission, it would be at fifteen. Uh, Random Lake is at sixteen dollars. And there was another one. Adele is at a little under eleven dollars. So even at that higher level, we would still be under some of our, our neighbors that are here, just, just for that comparison.
So we would still be reasonable in our community if we brought those rates up to the full amount. And from what my understanding, what Eric said earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong. The way you're doing testing right now is you are testing. Testing to get the numbers correct. The report to the DNR or?
It's not all the time, but if we have a, a bad sample, a bad base. It, it can be a multiple two things. So if the plant not functioning correctly. Uh, the sampler not pulling or something happened with the sample or operator error. So we have the ability to check and make sure. Now, if, and Mike's the one that's down there, Mike does it the next day and it's still the same, that's what the plant's at. We ruled out the other possibilities it could be. Now, I, I think I've been given the, we want to call it power. Permission from the current board and the administrator to try and do a lot of these projects. And to try and help the plant along without. Putting this out to bid, without trying to get an engineer involved, including subblowers. Uh, trying to fix some of the chemical equipment to make it function better to get our numbers floor. So I've been trying the best I can to keep numbers down, but I can only go so far. And the pictures I gave you, Kurt, of the clarifier, how do, how do I fix a mass? That's sitting in a hundred thousand gallons of water that's halfway rounded through. And if, if somebody can stand here and tell me, yeah, whatever, go ahead. It's fine. Mike can walk down there. I mean, if he drowns, we'll just get another guy. I don't know how anyone can think that walking on something that's going to collapse is safe. Well, then I guess you save a couple bucks and we lost an operator. And for your information, that clarifier did fail and it did collapse, not all the way in, it caught itself. But that's, this is where we are. Mike, when's the last time you were out in the bio tower?
She could fly one over the door. You want to have a miracle? One more.
So the things are failing and I'm doing, the staff is doing the best we can. So we don't have big cas- catastrophic failures or big costs, but there's only so much I can do before. And that's why, like I said, was it five, six? Eight, nine, whatever is the road, wait till the end. And maybe we can find a contractor that's looking for some work and get it really cheap. The hydrant, if you want to know about the hydrant, Kurt, we're dragging five hundred feet of holes from that hydrant to clean our tanks out. Well, eventually that hole is going to rip because we're dragging parts at all. So I'm asking the fire departments in the area to donate holes to me, so I don't have to spend money on it. Is it needed for the plant to run? No, but we're trying to clean it so the plant doesn't fail. But we're trying to be more proactive than that stuff.
I've asked around and, and, and I've asked other former board members and. That's, that's twenty percent every year for three years and seventy percent. To them is not reasonable. And I think we could do better than that. I think we could do better for the citizens of this community. And I feel like I'm the only one sticking up for them right now, so I think we need.
Even at that twenty percent a year, we are still.
Okay, but you're, you're, you're using worst-case scenarios, Jessica.
Yes, but we are still less than our surrounding.
You're predicting doomsday or something and it's not going to happen that way.
Okay.
I just don't believe that.
So let's, let's go the opposite.
There you are.
Let's go the opposite way. We don't plan. And we say, okay, you know what? We're going to do number one and that's it. And we pulled it wrong for a couple of years. And then our director comes to us again in three or four years and said, well, well. Yeah, we did okay for then, but now we're looking at two point five million to fix this one piece. And then we're back to doing another sixty percent increase to cover the cost of that.
I'm just saying, do what's reasonable. What we need to do now and save taxpayers money. That's all I'm saying. And, and I think that we're, we're just predicting. The worst thing possible scenario that's going to happen.
But if you don't plan for it and it happens.
We can still plan for it.
We're going to be getting.
Still plan for it. It's still planned for it.
So, so what? What's your proposal?
Well. Aren't there two? Proposals here, there's, there's the, uh. Uh, complete ranking number one. And then it gives the phasing at twelve percent, twelve percent, eleven percent.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be willing to look at that. I'd be willing to look at complete rankings, one and two. Sixty percent, sixty percent, fourteen percent. To me, that looks reasonable. And I said that before. So I don't know.
So if we do one and two, as you're proposing. What would your plan be for three through nine?
I don't know, something we could propose there, Eric, but he thinks that we could do down line or a strand or other bidders. We've only had one bidder, Strand.
But we have to look at.
How come, how come we haven't looked at other bidders?
It's not a bidder.
Exactly. We're going to have them.
These are, these are engineering estimates.
Yes, we haven't had any bidders.
Said any type of bid.
That's true. I know there are estimates.
So just in the hopes of guiding some sort of consensus here, do, are we all in agreement that one and two at least need to get done? That's what I've heard so far.
My personal opinion, after having an extensive conversation with our director. DPW. One, two, three, four and seven. Need to be done. As soon as possible. And. I'm not lying when I'm saying that, yes, it is actually reasonable because it will be approximately twenty-eight dollars. A quarter or? Is that what you kind of estimated?
Yeah.
Because it's going to be between three and your options three and four.
Correct.
And you know, none of us want to do this, but our previous boards did not. It kept getting brushed under the carpet and we had something else that we needed to take care of. We are being forced into this decision now. Because. There's only so much our director of DPW can do. With what he currently has.
And in fairness, he's been telling us. And in fairness, he's been telling us about this for two years.
Yes, exactly. He's been telling this to this, to half of this current board for two years. And, uh, since you basically started, correct?
And.
Did you run the numbers on those?
The what?
What?
One to four and seven, did you run the numbers on those?
Yeah, that was a quick.
Same ones we talked about yesterday.
Yeah, I did a quick estimate, uh, after trustee, uh, Frank had asked me. Um, so on the average annual dollar increase, it's about one-twelve. That's the full dollar, and then that breaks down to roughly, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine a quarter. Just so you have.
Under ten dollars a month. That's what we would be charging. Us in addition. To what we currently pay.
And you're right, Kurt, this can go out to bid and come back way under, great, but it also too come back way over and we start over again.
Mm-hmm. We don't know what it's going to cost. But at the same time, we also recognize that we need to play, prepare for it, we need to plan for it, and I would rather do it right now. Versus five years from now, and who knows what our costs are going to be then. Really, honestly, our, this board should have made this decision five years ago.
But at least go out for bids on this stuff, so that we find out what, what it's worth in the market. And we can either say, well, okay, let's do this one, or let's reject them all because we can, we back to the drawing room. We have to at least get that part.
Yes, I'd say we have to go and get bids for one, two, three, four and seven, on minimum. And start looking at it, be proactive.
And then it's fixed. That's what other municipalities have done around here, Kurt, is they sent it out to bid. It came back way over, they started over again.
Yeah, I think we at least need to move forward and. Start looking at it, you know, we can't just keep spinning our wheels.
All I ask is keep the cost down, because I don't think people could stomach this. Seventy percent is just way too much.
Again, you're focusing on the seventy percent.
I'm not gonna change my mind on this, Jessica. I'm sorry.
Looking at it going, are you looking at the fact that it's going to be ten dollars a month or?
I don't know how you could do that with a crystal ball and say that. I mean, I, I really don't. I think, I think there's, there's way too much. Prenosticating going on here and worst-case scenarios. I know that we wanted to have the best product possible, but we wanted at a reasonable cost and. I just don't, I, I don't think the original projections that we made are, are fair, being fair to the people. And I've talked to other people, other people on the, uh, the passports, or that were on this, was on this board in the past. And they don't think this is reasonable. They don't. We could do a better job than this.
I mean, I could argue that they should have been reasonable and done an increase when they were on the board, but we're not gonna go there, so. The fact that we're looking at.
Yeah, we're dealing with the here and now.
Thirty dollars roughly a quarter. I don't feel is super unreasonable for the way things are. Yes, there are people in our community that are on a fixed income. I don't have a ton of expendable money that I just feel like throwing off to the DPW anytime they ask for it. That's not what I wanna do. But at the same time, I need to do my part as a citizen in this village to help take care of this village, whether I'm on the board or not. And this is part of it.
And then you need to do your job at keeping costs down also.
And again.
And, and that's another job, not just to, to stick it to people.
That's not anybody out there to stick it to anybody. I'm not gonna say, oh, you know what, Pete, I don't like you. I wanna stick thirty dollars a quarter to you and I want you to pay more for water this month.
So, so in the, in the end.
We're looking at this as what's best for the village and what we need to do to make sure that our department's run right. I have seen so much shit happen within this village in the last two years. Thank God, I know Aaron. He's given me so much information. Do you know? The frickin' well, at, what was it, well one, there was a cardboard cover over the well. Thank you previous boards for not fixing that. Thanks, Eric, for bringing it to our attention. It's, we have done this.
I don't know what that has to do with this now. I don't know what that has to do with this now.
It's because nobody has done anything about this for how many years, and now we have to make a tough decision. Does it suck? Yes. Is it gonna suck for a little bit? Yes. Is it gonna make things better for our village in the ro, long run? Absolutely.
And we are still going to be equal or less than the communities surrounding us that are. As he said, we're at, Adele is at just under eleven dollars. We're at, if we do with the seventy percent as you discussed, it's going to be around eleven dollars. A whatever unit you are. Random Lake is at sixteen dollars.
And again, we're for the only, and we're not gonna compare ourselves to other communities.
Okay.
Alright, so.
To, and I hate to.
You're not gonna change my mind. You, you can yell at me and throw paper in my face. I'm not gonna change my mind.
You change your mind. I'm asking you to think about this. You advocated for the EMS program, right?
Shove a piece of paper in my face and tell me, yes, you did. You did.
Okay, you're fine. Let's calm down.
You need to hold it down. You need to hold, hold your role, okay?
Alright.
You sat there and you said.
Everybody.
In front of, in the public forum.
That's my gavel. Stop.
When did you throw the gavel on her?
I just did. Both of you. Sound like my kids.
I am just trying to be passionate for the people of this village. That's all I'm trying to do. And if you wanna take offense to that, fine.
These are prices that we set. These are costs that we have to endure in.
I don't know what that means. I really don't know what that means, Don.
Alright, well, let me just talk about maybe next steps here and then guide if you guys would like to make a motion or not. So really, there's gonna be three outputs of these decisions that you're making. So one of which will be an eventual resolution that'll come before you guys on whatever those rates are that you would, that you just, uh, agreed to, um, set them at. And whether you wanna do them all at once, right, or if you wanna do a phasing approach, what that resolution would look like. Um, the second would be, we would work with Strand on creating a bid package for the set projects that you have. Uh, selected here and go through that process. And then what's the third one? I'm like blanking out, Michelle, and I went through there with you.
Lisa needs to start.
Yes.
The clean water fund loan.
Yep, so then Lisa would begin the application process for the clean water fund loan as well. And so what order we take these is really up to you. Um, uh, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you if you wanna take some sort of motion, just so I can get, get a clear direction from the board, and you're welcome to. And then I, I would, my next steps would be really to work with Strand and Ellers to say, this is the direction the board's going. And they'll put together those more formal documents that I would bring back for you.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're in order for some sort of motion to direct the staff. To move forward. Keep in mind, we are not voting on a, on a grand total. And, and, and committing to, you know, five million, six million, nine million or anything. Uh, right now, we, we, we need to move forward, we need to explore. The next steps.
Which is our bid package, correct?
Get bids, but we, and this is kinda defining some priorities, you know, what do we even wanna get bids on? Uh, so keep that in mind. We're not spending money tonight. We are moving forward with the process. To see how much we're gonna need to spend over the next. Number of years up to twenty-two, twenty-three.
Motion.
I would, I would look, I would word it as.
Us to seriously look at and get bids on one, two, three, four and seven.
And if, if the rest of, I mean, I would put the motion out there.
Motion together, but I wanna make sure that it's worded correctly.
And if the board agrees with you, then that's how we'll move forward.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to proceed with getting a bid package put together for. Uh, options one, two, three, four and seven. On the list that the administrator gave us.
I'll second that.
I would just add, along with the associated, you know, rate impact that those would have, yeah.
And rate impact.
Yeah.
On one, two, three, four and seven.
Yeah, the other ones are items that we can put on a regular budget.
Yeah, we can take care of that as, as Director Paul has.
You go there, you go down to, uh, Walter's Holdings and order one for a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So we have a satisfactory motion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and I think we have thoroughly discussed this. Uh, let's call the question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes with one nay. Alright. Is there any correspondence? Items for future consideration by the, by the board?
I went through one myself.
And he did.
Items for future consideration by the board? Anything?
I would consider, uh. Adjoining.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.